Good evening. I call this special council meeting, July 23rd, 2018, to order. The time is 6:34. Can we please have roll call from the clerk?
Mayor Protemplus.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilor Grassing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here, thank you. Meeting is open to the public. Would anyone like to address city council? Yes, please. Good evening.
My name is Martha Kehoe, and I live at 7065 Dillon. I would like to discuss the appointment for the city manager. I'm under the impression that we have hired a firm to try to find a city manager. Now, correct me if I'm wrong.
We have not hired the firm.
Am I correct?
No, 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 we have not hired anyone.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, thank you. I don't see why we need to hire any firm or anybody else. We've got a good lady that is very well qualified. The credentials are good. And I always thought in our city, we promote within. I've been here 63 years, and a lot of people have been promoted into a position. I think we should promote within our city. If this person is qualified, I think this person should be able to accept the job if she wishes. Now, this is my opinion, a lot of you probably won't agree with me, but I just don't see us spending our taxpayer money on looking for somebody when we already have it with us. And I just don't think it's right. We could put that money somewhere else. And I appreciate all of you paying attention to this, because I think we've got good people at City Hall, and if they're qualified, that's where we should start promoting. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council? All right, no one else is asked to be recognized. All right, order of business for this special council meeting is a discussion regarding recruiting a process firm for the city manager position. Ms. Mars, do you have any report or opening comments on this? Okay. I guess just to set the table, at the last regular city council meeting, three professional firms provided input on how they would operate a search, a recruitment, search, and review for the next city manager of Madison Heights. And members of council had the opportunity to ask questions of the representatives from these three firms. The three firms submitted written materials either before or during the meeting. And this is a, simply just an open forum discussion for council members to figure out what direction, if any, they want to take. There's no action that's required at this meeting. This is just an opportunity to have a conversation on the pros and cons of any direction that the body will take. So it's really open format. Anyone in council want to start? Mr. Corbett?
Well, actually, I was going to indicate maybe a special counsel might want to make a few introductory comments, just to recap where we're at and what an appropriate action might be at some point. And that's a little loud, if you would recognize him.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Brandon Fornier is with us tonight, special labor attorney who has advised council on this subject. Brandon, did you want to make any comments, opening remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I'd be happy to. Approximately three or four weeks ago, our office provided some background material to the city council regarding some information for search firms that were available in the Michigan area for city manager searches. One of the things that the public may have observed last week is, of the three firms, there was not a high percentage of direct Michigan experience. That is because Michigan Municipal League generally handles searches for Michigan communities, and for reasons known to the city council, we did not pursue them as a possible candidate for this particular search. However, all three of those firms, within the last year or two, have been very active in city manager searches. Some of them have a higher percentage of density as it relates to the state of Michigan. Presently, there are many active searches within greater Detroit area, as well as across the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any assistance that might foster tonight's discussion. But I think all three presentations offered very interesting choices and opportunities for the city to consider. And I'm sorry for the feedback.
You know, I guess I'll open the council discussion with my observations, just to kind of whet your appetite. You know, there were three companies that interviewed with council, Amy Sell, GovHR, and SGR. And each had unique qualities and maybe some unique downsides that I identified. And someone commented, it wasn't me, that it reminded them of, was it Goldilocks and the Three Bears, and, you know, a bed too small, a bed too big, you know, kind of like that. And so, you know, on the big side, you had SGR, the big firm from Texas. They have the most employees, they're the biggest company. Maybe they're too big to give us the attention to detail. You know, they're based in Texas. But they have a lot of experience nationwide, very extensive background checks, they talked about psychological testing, very big company, SGR. The presentation was a little less personal, but I think that's what you're going to get with a big company. Then you had the smallest company, Amy Sell, and we actually met Ms. Amy Sell. She's much smaller, she's Michigan-based, she doesn't have as much experience as the big company, but she will definitely give us a lot of personal attention. She succeeded with the city of Holland, which is a similar-sized city to ours. And what she may lack in the size of a company that the Texas company had, she'll make up with attention to detail, and really, helping us will be her life. And then, right in the middle, is this company called GovHR, which is a little bit bigger company. I think they're based in Illinois, very successful in placing executives in the state of Illinois and Michigan. They're not as big as SGR, but they're not as small as Amy Sell, in my observation. And what was interesting about GovHR is, although they are a larger company, they do have local connections. And, you know, what's interesting, it's an all-women-owned corporation, which is, I just noted, that was interesting. But the representative for GovHR who would help us is a former city manager just up the road, who happened to live at 14 in Dequindre. Two of the firms mentioned it would be well over 100 hours of work to do, you know, for them to complete this project. And the 100 hours of work would go into forming a job description, interviewing members of council, and possibly staff members to kind of feel what direction the future hire would need to fit in. And then canvassing the country, the state and the county, for potential candidates who would fit our position. And then dozens of hours going through applications and scoring them and prioritizing them based on what council is looking for. And then more hours of narrowing that down, and then assisting council through interviews, and then helping us with selecting someone and negotiating ultimately a contract. Hundreds of hours. And so, that was my observations. Perhaps they are shared with others, but I just, I'm interested to hear what other people have. I'm not really leaning towards any of them right now. I think they're all, they all have pros and cons, but what's the, what are some of the other ideas you guys had? Mr. Bliss?
If I may add to, I think you had a really good review there, but I don't necessarily know that it's Goldilocks in so much as, they're very different firms. So it's like hockey versus football versus baseball. What we would benefit from of each one is very, very different, so I think it's more introspective of what we, as a council, want to benefit from. I think that Amy Sell would be much more of a proactive firm. They would find us candidates that maybe we hadn't thought about, that none of the other candidates would. We'd get a lot of that personal attention, and it would be about the candidate pool itself, which was evidenced by what they did in Holland. You know, we'd be their, you know, I guess, biggest and at that moment in time, only municipal client, and so we'd have a lot of that focus. And so what we would benefit from there is the candidate pool. She had the highest percentage of candidate pool that she sourced. So that she specifically sourced, she said about a quarter of the candidate pool in Holland were ones that she specifically sourced, which, as you got into the other firms, GovHR and SGR, it went from maybe five with GovHR to SGR had, there is as much more of a push it out there and see what comes in. So Amy Sell would be very aggressive in finding a candidate pool based upon the council interactions. GovHR has the benefit of having a city, a former city manager that's local, running the search. So even though they do have the company itself, we would benefit from kind of that local context, which we wouldn't get as much with the other two, particularly having a former city manager at the helm. And what I think that the biggest benefit for SGR is, is their review process. When you see something like what happened in Troy, you know, to me, the biggest and most important decision that we, as a council, can make is who that city manager is. And the city of Troy was completely blindsided by a manager that ended up having to be fired. And so, having a firm that does that type of detailed analysis at every level of the process, SGR has a lot of benefits there that the other two firms can't touch, as far as the detailed candidate profiles that we would have access to. So it's pros and cons with each, I think, like you said, Mr. Mayor, but I think it's really more introspective of what we want. Do we want somebody who's going to unearth a bunch of candidates that we would have never found? Do we want the heavy process? Or do we want that local touch of somebody who's been in that chair in a neighboring community? I think that that's probably the way that I would contextualize it.
Thank you for those thoughts. Other council member thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I believe in being open to the public and our audience, and anybody who sees this meeting. And this has gone on long enough, and I think we need to specify the minimum and maximum that each firm is going to be charging our city for this service. I don't want the public to know that we, I want them to know what it's going to cost us. I think it's only fair for us to highlight that. Each firm and the minimum and maximum, I know some of them aren't really accurate, because there are other steps that we may want to take later on, like paying for expenses of somebody coming here to be interviewed from another state. I would like the public to be totally aware of what this is going to cost our city. Otherwise, I can't sit here and be honest to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Geddings?
Yes, I believe Councilman Scott has brought up a good point. You know, 25, 20 to 30,000, if that's close, just to ballpark it. I just think it's a lot of money to, as Mrs. Kehoe said, you know, we've, we've got someone, I think, that has done the job and is doing the job. But I know you guys want to be somewhat transparent, and you want to have the best person sitting in the chair. But before we spend all the money, I think we should take a good look, hard look at ourselves and what's in front of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm not saying that any of these firms are not worth it, but I just think that we need to, first of all, decide where we're going to go, what kind of a city manager we want. I believe that each one of those firms recognizes the fact that before they search for a city manager, they're going to get our opinions of what we want. And they will do that on an individual basis, which I think is the best way to do it. But until we find out what we want in a city manager, I really don't think that I'm at a point where I want to search or spend money unjustifiably, that we're not even in the
Okay, we need to hire a city manager, so we can do it on our own or hire a firm. Now, every contract, of course, has incidentals, but Amy Sell quoted, her company quoted 17,000, GovHR quoted 22,000, and SGR quoted $28,000. So some of the incidentals would be, you know, depending on how many finalists we want to fly in. You know, so you look at the company we're in, you know, cities, cities don't do this on their own. Troy hired GovHR, South Lion, looking for a manager, hired GovHR, Grand Rapids is working with ICMA, Owasso, Albion is with GovHR, Hart, Michigan, is with ICMA, East Point's with GovHR. And so, it looks like, you know, the range is 17,000 at the low end and 28,000 at the high end. Or we can, you know, seriously think about, you know, if you want to, if council wants to do this project on their own, I mean, you cannot avoid the inevitability of this project. If you do it on our own, we're looking at, you know, over 100 hours of work. And so, you know, of course, we can't ask the acting city manager to do this on her own, especially if she's one of prospective candidates. So it would fall on the city council or its attorneys to do this work. And so, you know, if council wants to do this on their own, let, you know, we should, you know, let's just be very specific about who's going to do that work. And if it's, you know, GovHR said 200 hours of work, I'm not going to do 200 hours of work of forming, you know, a job description, and I don't know enough city managers in North America to call, and I don't think I'm qualified to do background checks. Of course, we could run criminal background checks, but, I mean, who, no one on this board is a licensed psychologist. You know, we put police officers, prospective police recruits through psychological background checks. You know, hiring an outside firm for an executive is not a rare thing, but it is the best practice. So we could have an acting city manager for perpetuity, but I think it's a responsible thing for council, at least at some point, start to form an idea of how we are going to go about hiring the next manager. And we either do it ourself, or we hire a professional with experience. And I don't think we're skilled enough to do psychological background checks, and I know half of us have full-time day jobs, so I don't know who wants to sit, you know, and scroll through 100 applications, and, you know, every application will have reference checks. So, you know, who's going to call the references? You know, for, you know, Bobby Sue from Louisiana who wants a job, I'm not going to call his or her four references and do that up for 100 applications. First of all, I'm not skilled at that, and second of all, I don't have the time. So let's start to specifically talk about the best direction for either hiring one of these three firms that we interviewed, doing it ourself, or if there's another option, that's great, let's hear it, but let's try to be specific.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Corbett.
Well, let me disabuse the group of thinking about doing it ourselves, because y'all can do that, but I'll be reading a newspaper while everybody rises to an additional level of incompetence. There is nobody at the table qualified, with due respect to everybody who I admire, to accomplish that. And besides, we look damn foolish, when you get right down to it. You have to, you know, we put a professional face on this. With respect to the firms, and I was just saying to Mayor Protem before we started, I can live with really any one of the three. I mean, my personal preference, just based on sitting the one time listening, was kind of reverse order, but it's not a, it's not a big difference, it's a 1A, 1B, 1C. I think Mark brings up a good point regarding, I'm sorry, Amy Sell. Yeah. What she may not have in size and so on, she certainly would make up for enthusiasm and hustle, and would bring a boutique approach to the process. I could easily live with that. At the end of the day, who you work with, these are all professionals that were, you know, that come highly recommended. Like I said, when we go, when we represent not only ourselves, but the city out in the workplace, we need to have a professional face on it representing us. And also, dealing with the problems. Yeah, my big worry would be what happens with the vetting that was incomplete or incorrect. That's, that's got to be your nightmare up here. I mean, not just for political reasons, but ethical and moral. So, yeah, so my view of it is that, you know, I could live with all three, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the third company's name, even though they're my preference.
SGR.
SGR?
SGR.
SGR would be my preference, but like I said, if somebody's got a stronger view, I'm good with that, just because of the depth of their outreach with the people that they're in constant contact with. Like I said, I'm not 100% sold on dragging somebody away from a job they're happy with, because they're going to do it to you someday. So you might want to be careful about that. But like I said, if somebody's got a stronger preference for one or the other two, I'm good with it. I, what I, what I don't want to see is this become a thing. And, because that's going to start to have a counter effect. Whatever positive we put forward, if we sit here and look like, whatever we're going to look like, I think you have three good choices, rationally make a pick. I respect the opinion, but, but for reasons, no one to have people at this table, we need to take a broad look at the outreach. And so that's, that's my opinion, is, you know my order, but I could, but whether it's Amy or the middle group, S?
GovHR.
GovHR, thank you. Yeah, you've got them covered for me. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, Mayor. Whatever, whatever the majority says, I'm with.
Yeah, Mr. Corbett, thank you. I kind of feel the same way. They're all, these three firms are qualified, like you said, great references, great experience. I could sleep well at night if we hired any of these three firms. Yes, sir?
Just to add to Councilman Corbett's point, I'm, I'm always a proponent of cutting and slashing budget line items. I mean, we said on Broken Chairs, because that money was better suited somewhere else. Always been very outspoken on that, will continue to be. This is not an area where you save money. This, I mean, we, we have historically, everybody comes from outside at some point in their career, and we have historically had managers for long periods of time, two to three times the average of the cities around us. So making the right hire and being 100% confident in it, to where it doesn't come and blow up at us, like some of the cities we see locally, is an investment that I think we have to make. I think doing it without professional help would be foolish. Not that we couldn't, we absolutely could, but the reality is, is we're still going to spend that money in attorney fees and staff time, and it's, to me, much better to get a professional, that this is what they do. I, I love all three of them, again, for different reasons. Just to go with, I guess, the precedent that Councilman Corbett set, to me, I would, my 1A slash 1B would be SGR and Amy Sell. If we're looking to save money, Amy Sell would be the place to do it, and we would get a talented professional there. I would rank GovHR third, just similar to Councilman Corbett.
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Soltis?
So, to be honest, I didn't like any of them, actually. The second one, the Governor HR, or GovHR?
Yeah.
I think they're big, but as Mayor Protem pointed out, you know, some of the, they had a gray line there between firms or cities that hired them and them actually not using them. To me, it just sounded like they inflated their numbers, just to look better than what they might have been. That really bothered me. So I see that maybe as a problematic if we hired them. The second, the third gentleman, I mean, I liked him at the beginning, but, you know, he talked for 40, 45 minutes, I mean, he talked himself out of my decision after that. You know, I just, there's a certain point in time, but he just, you know, so I don't, and they're too big and from Texas, and so I just think they're too far remote. Amy Sell, I mean, I'd give her credit, you know, she's a one-woman team, and she seemed knowledgeable, she seemed a little inexperienced. But I guess if I had to choose out of the three, it would be that first one.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Mrs. Scott made a very good point that regardless of who we choose, we need to make sure that we know what we want in a city manager, which I expect we've all been thinking of over the last couple of weeks, and have come up with some ideas on what we want. And I expect that some of us will overlap, that we want the same thing, some of us will have something that someone says, whatever, makes no difference to me. But from the ideas that we have, that we can draw consensus of, that is what whoever is going to use to form a basis of the search. And I just think that's something we need to keep in mind. If I were to rank from the three people that we had, I would have to say I would go with Amy Sell. I thought she presented herself well, that she made reference to the other two firms, and that they were more established or had more experience, or whatever it was, that she recognized that they had that, that she does not. But I believe she said she had 14 people who worked with her, and they all live in southeast Michigan. And to me, that says, that's a firm that's familiar with the unique issues that are facing the Michigan cities, that someone in Texas wouldn't necessarily be aware of. I think that, I think that if we went with that firm, I believe she said that they would spend 300 hours, the second said 170, and the third couldn't give us a number, because I think he had referenced a city where they met, they spent an entire week just meeting with residents, and that, I don't see that happening in our city. I just, I don't see that happening. So I didn't like that we couldn't get a very firm answer. I also have some concerns about the second one, in that they worked for someone who didn't hire them, and while I understand that that does happen, it, it just did seem a little odd. So my vote would be to go for the business that was going to spend a significant amount of time giving us personalized service based here in Michigan.
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss? Just as, as an action step, I would be very, very comfortable with Amy Sell. The one thing that was missing, which is why it was kind of 1A versus 1B, was the detailed, the psychological profiles, all of that review. I would think maybe as a potential action item, if it's, if we can potentially have some consensus, which it sounds like just a table talk, that there might be some consensus around Amy Sell, my vote would be swayed there, if we could add some of that testing. So if, if we can reach out to Amy Sell, if staff can, can ask them what type of additional profiling that they can do, I think that that's, the psychological assessments, the things that SGR were going to provide to us would be very important, and that would be a best-of-both-worlds approach, because we'd get the best and most proactive for the lowest cost.
we'd get the best and most proactive for the lowest cost with that type of profiling. So, I mean, that to me would be a slam dunk. I'd be 100% for it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'm, I'm wondering if we were to go with Amy Sell, the psychological testing wouldn't be on every single candidate, it would be on the top two or three.
Yes.
And I would think that whatever the cost to do the psychological profile on a handful of people, wouldn't be something that would be, I mean, even if she didn't have someone, and she probably does have an outside firm who could do it, our own HR might have some kind of contact with someone who could do that for us. So I, I would have no problem saying that we hire her on the basis of also doing testing.
Right. Just a reminder, you know, we're not gonna entertain any motions. There's no decision made tonight. You know, this is just kind of an opportunity for council just to flesh out some of our opinions and exactly what we're doing, just reliving the interview process from the last meeting, and kind of constructively stumbling through the pros and cons. We will devise some sort of system, if, if council will be ready to ultimately vote on this. A vote will be at a, at a regular council meeting, part of our regular business. So just remember, this meeting, no decision, it's just a conversation, a discussion. I'm sorry, was someone trying to jump in?
Mayor?
Mr. Fornier?
Just to add a comment to that recent conversation, the Human Resources Department does engage in psychological screening for new hire applicants, so we do have that capacity to make those connections for higher level positions than basic entry level.
Could you repeat that? I, I think I missed part of that. HR does, or does not?
Our Human Resources Department does do that as a service regarding new hires for entry level employees. And those firms are capable of conducting those services for other forms of hires and do in other cases. Through a third party vendor, not anyone on our staff.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Could we get, as, as a part of that analysis, could we get the gap between what we are capable of doing versus what SGR is proposing that we do as a piece of their services? I'd like to see if there are any gaps and, you know, make a decision with all the information.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
One last thought. I, I really think it's important if we, the council, be active in this, in that, you know, if, if, if a lot of these, these, all these companies were talking about soliciting resumes, and to me, that's, you know, being in the private sector, that's more of a passive approach. I'd like to see more of an active approach. I don't see there's anything wrong with going down a list of some of the potential city managers here in the state of Michigan, and going out and recruiting. I mean, it's done in every other business. I, I think it should be a balance between the two. You know, those who submit resumes, because those who are submitting them are either don't like their job, or don't have a job, you know, or just wanted a change. And I think if we look at some of the city managers that are here, and there's nothing wrong, in my opinion, to go out and recruit them.
How do we actually physically do that?
Well, through, through one of the companies, I think. And I think Amy Sell was local, and I think she would have a better chance of doing it.
So you're saying, active, the active approach to hunt down a candidate is the most preferable?
I think it's a balance.
Not just, not just attacking a posting on a library bulletin board, but actually targeting some people, getting on the phone, sending emails.
Yeah. I think if you just wait for applicants, you're only collecting part of the, the pool of resources out there. And I think, again, like other industries, they go out and recruit, you know. I, I know we're not a sporting organization, but they go out and they recruit. They have recruiters that look at certain individuals that they would want to run, help run their city.
So you're saying, I think a light bulb just went on, Dave. Let me see if I understand your point. You don't want people necessarily looking for a job. You wanna go after the stars who may not be looking for a job, but maybe we can make them an offer to say, hey, we're, we're better for your career, move here.
Yeah, I, that's, that's.
To poach, to poach just an all-star from another city.
I don't see, I don't see anything unethical with that. I, I think if you have a balance, though, you can still see the ones that submit the resumes, but I don't think it hurts to go out and look and, and see what other cities are doing well, and, and what, how we would like our city to move forward, and what they're doing. Because then they already have a recipe for success. But it's a balance, though. I don't think it's just one over the other.
Mr. Bliss, you obviously observed this of the three candidates. Which firm had the better active approach? Could you repeat that observation?
Yeah. And, and, and this is, I mean, we deal with a lot of recruiting firms in, in my career, and I've interviewed and hired hundreds of folks. And that was the basis of my questioning with regards to passive candidates. So these are the folks that, you know, like Councilman Saltis is saying, are not actively looking, but with the right opportunity, they could be poached in quotation marks. And so I asked that question of, of each of the firms. I, I wanted to know, and anybody that's, that's in the audience now can watch that tape back from the last council meeting, if you'd like to see each of these responses from the firms. But what, what Amy Sell came out on top, because in the Holland search, about 25% of those candidates were passively found. So they, they found and sourced those candidates from folks that did not apply through the traditional process. It was less, I think, like eight with, with Gov HR. None of them were the ones that they chose, in both examples that they gave. So none of the finalists that, that were chosen were sourced by them. And then SGR is simply posted and put it out to their network in whatever comes. So the most aggressive, to what Councilman Saltis is saying, that's attacking that passive talent, that would be Amy Sell. By, it's not even close. They're two to four times what the other competitors were looking at. And it's because they're so small, they have to do that to be able to set themselves apart.
All right. It's 7:11, 7:12. We have a regular city council meeting that starts at 7:30. So, you know, we'll probably discuss this for another 10 minutes before we adjourn this special meeting. Again, we're not making decisions on which firm to hire during this special meeting. But can we discuss maybe the process on how we may wanna vote on this? I was thinking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sherman?
Sorry to interrupt.
I was thinking maybe it would be like a, how our goal process was, a rating system, where council, each individual council member will have all the options available to them, and they can say 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I, I, that's one possibility. I mean, council's familiar with that voting process. And that could at least help inform council, council members where their colleagues are coming from. So when we do bring this to the next meeting, public meeting, you know, we can have something to base our decision on, more than just whoever speaks first and, you know, crams H, you know, Gov HR down our throats. No offense to them, I just picked their name. But I, I mean, or how do you wanna do it? Mr. Sherman?
Well, my comment, Mr. Mayor, relates to the, the, the process. I want, point of information, I want council to be aware of the fact that council could add the item to the agenda for action at tonight's meeting, or put it on the agenda at a future council meeting. But it would take four votes to select the search firm, but because the money is not appropriated in the budget, it would take five votes to authorize the, the expenditure of the money. So I want council to be aware of that. As far as, as far as the final deliberations and the ultimate selection, it would be up to council as to, as to, you know, in, at an open meeting to make the decision on what they wanna do and what their reasons are for doing it.
It's up to all of us how we wanna proceed. So like Mr. City Attorney Sherman said, we could make a decision at tonight's regular meeting, add this to the agenda, and it would require, you know, a motion to add to the agenda second. And then, when it comes up, it would be a motion to hire X, Y, or Z firm. Or you could slow this down, and devise some sort of voting systems, a ranking system. I, I don't mind any, or other ideas, are there other ideas?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I make a, a suggestion? The only problem with, with tonight is, is that I would have, regardless of who it is, whether it's Amy Sell's group or whoever, I would like the attorney and the HR personnel to have a conversation with them to explore the, the cost, so that we have a clearer picture of that, some parameters for the additional fees that you identified, which would be, for example, bringing people in from out of town, and to look at a draft contract for, for hiring. So that need not be a major process, but, but I, I think it's minimum due diligence that we should apply in this case.
I think that's.
I, I would have no problem with saying, well, why don't we ask them to do it with respect to Ms. Sell's firm, and then we don't have to commit until we come up to the vote? We could always change her mind. But at least we're, we'll get it started and, and see what the costs look like. At least we'd have a basis for evaluating that.
Yeah, I agree. It'd be nice to have something tangible in our hands with a attorney opinion or some advice, just to say, hey, this is what a contract will look like. Here are, here's a clearer picture of the costs.
I would, I would suggest either, where are we at? We're in, either the second or fourth meeting of August, the second, you know what I'm saying, the first or second meeting of August, depending on the, the comfort level of the people involved. And who's to say somebody won't be on vacation?
Yeah, so at the regular meeting tonight, do we do anything? A, a motion to ask staff to solicit a contract from one of them? I mean, not, we're not approving either company.
I think that is, yeah, but, you know, unless somebody.
Oh, okay, that's good enough. Yeah, no act, yeah, no action was taken. But the point was well made.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I appreciate Councilman Corbett's idea, but, you know what, I, this, if it was up to me, I mean, I'll defer to what council decides, but I, you know, I just vote, might as well just vote on it tonight. You know, I can, I can see as doing that just with the motion, and, I mean, it, I don't know. I don't know if it's necessary to postpone it.
Vote on, pardon, but vote on what? I mean, we don't have a contract, we don't have terms of the contract, we have an outline, but.
Yeah, we just have the sales pitch at this point, and, you know, an impression of their personality, and a rough estimate of the costs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is the suggestion that we get a contract from all three, or is it just from the one that?
No, just Ms. Sell at this point, because I think that, I mean, I haven't heard anybody strongly advocate for anybody else.
I agree.
Although the, the process, let's say we get up to, and we decide we really don't want her, for whatever reason, then we could always go with somebody else.
Okay.
But at least we've gone through the process, we've established the cost, we've seen a contract.
Yeah, without making any decisions, I'm okay with getting more details from Amy Sell before we decide whether to go with her or anyone else or not. Your Honor? Yes?
If I may ask, I, I'm not sure why, at this point, we don't have sample contracts. I mean, obviously, the attorney's office would need to go back and forth, but, I mean, I would assume that that'd be just a standard part of their pitch to us, is the fine print of the contract. I mean, I, is, is there a reason that we don't have those as of today?
Or, or do we have the contracts, and they just, they just haven't floated up to us yet? You know, who makes the first offer, right?
Through the chair. When we arranged for them to come and present, we didn't specifically seek any items, but asked them to provide whatever information they felt comfortable with providing to the city council. So I don't have all of the information that's been provided to the council over the last few weeks, but that is the basis by which the information that we gathered was obtained.
All right. So just through our method, we only asked for presentations. We haven't got to the formal exchanging of offers or contracts yet. We're still courting each other.
Okay. Then, Your Honor, what I would add to Councilman Corbett's point, and again, I don't know if we need a specific motion to add it on to that agenda, but depending on vacations, either the first or second meeting of August, I, I would like to see a contract and have the opportunity to vote on Amy Sell. But prior to that, I would also like more definition as to the psychological search, and, and some awareness of what SGR might have been providing. And so that might be something that Amy Sell or our internal staff would be able to duplicate, because I do think that it's valuable. So I'd like to see all of that done and issued in a report to council along with that contract.
I concur with that. All right, council, it's 7:20. A reminder, we have the regular meeting at 7:30.
Mr. Mayor?
So I'm only artificially terminating this, just because we have another meeting. So, Ms. Scott, I'll invite your comment in a minute. But if there's more discussion, of course, we have more public meetings, more opportunities to discuss this. We're just kind of artificially restricted tonight, but the public conversation will continue, meeting after meeting after meeting. Mrs. Scott, thank you.
Yes. In my opinion, I am not comfortable in deciding this tonight. I prefer the suggestions by Councilman Corbett and Councilman Bliss, that we prefer to wait at least for another meeting. That can be decided later, but I, I'm not comfortable in deciding this tonight. I do secretly, in my opinion, I do favor Amy Sell, which was the first presenter. I think she would do a good job, and I especially am comfortable with her because she's a lot more local than the other firms. I know that last week, Councilman Corbett mentioned that nobody had ever gone through this before on our council, but that's inaccurate. And it's probably, yeah, I just wanted to remind him and assure the people that I do have experience with searching for a city manager or a department head or head, because 10 years ago, when I was president of the Michigan Municipal League, we had a difficulty where our current director had to resign. And we, of, of course, Michigan Municipal League, in my opinion, is the best place to search for a city manager for our state. And so, of course, we use our in-house people, because that's what they are professionals in doing for all the people in the state. It took about six months, we had several meetings of the board. There were 18, 18 people on the board, that they were not all present, because we had a select steering committee, which I hope we will be doing here as well. But we, Hemden Hall, we interviewed people, we had people come in from around the country. We interviewed actually three people in the final decision. And we chose the person, Dan Gilbert, who was there, Dan Gil Martin, I'm sorry, who was there all along, and had been well-trained in everything that the Michigan Municipal League did. We felt very confident in his choice, and I would have to say, he has more than met our expectations. Keep in mind, this is for a society decision for 525 cities all over Michigan. So this was a huge responsibility. And we have never been sorry for choosing Dan Gil Martin, because he has done a wonderful job, because he knew what, upfront, what was involved in being a city manager. The decision of hiring a city manager, I don't want anybody to think that it's not something I don't think we should do, because it's probably the most important thing we're gonna do all year. The city manager needs to know that he, we depend on him for all our major decisions. We need to communicate with him, he needs to communicate with, yeah, I'm sorry, it should be he or she. be he or she, needs to communicate with us, and that's one of the most important things we're going to do here. So I'm not shirking my responsibility of hiring one, I just would like to make sure that the firm that we hire knows that the council needs to voice their opinion, and get on paper, or whatever you will do, the, what we were looking for in a city manager, because not all of us are sure. This decision has been made by a few people, and the rest of us are not sure of what we're looking for in a city manager. We need to get all on the same page before we can succeed in this process. So I would say, I would like to postpone this meeting, but I do, at this point, favor Amy Sell, and I appreciate all the people that came, because they were very professional, and I was very pleased I could have chosen any one of them, but it sounds like there are a lot of people on here that favor Amy, and I didn't have anything objecting to her with the effect of perhaps she really needs to know the state of Michigan and the people that are out there, but I think she could do a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
That's all I have to say.
I think those are powerful words, and I think a lot of us agree and respect those, and I'm comfortable letting that be the last word for this special meeting. Staff has heard from us, I believe there's just enough direction for staff to continue our conversation at another date and time. So no action will be made at this meeting. I thank members of staff and council and the public who spoke tonight. Is there any other business for this special meeting only? All right, hearing none, the special meeting is adjourned. Thank you.